Right. I want to call to order the County Placer Planning Commission for Thursday, February 25th, 2021. If we could stand for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, if you could roll, do the roll call, please.
Yes, good morning. Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Di Mattei?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Woodward?
Here.
Mr. Hersog?
Here.
Mr. Seveson is absent. Mr. Haugie?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome, everyone. It's important for Placer County to conduct our business to ensure essential services for our citizens, and we're going everything we can to facilitate the residents staying at home and physical distancing. We encourage the public to engage in the process. With that in mind, our public comment for this meeting will be offered in person and through a remote virtual process. Citizens who wish to comment today that did not call the reservation line prior to the start of this meeting should be prepared to comment via the Zoom platform. To join virtually online, click on the link on the Planning Commission homepage. Please make sure your microphone is muted. You may also call in using our toll-free numbers to hear the meeting at 888-788-0099 or 877-853-5247, and please enter the webinar ID 912-8937-2652. Please press *6 to mute yourself. If you would like to make a public comment virtually, please raise your hand with the hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you are calling in, please press *9 to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time of that I open public comment for the specific item that you would like to address, which may include the public comment for matters not included on the agenda, a consent item, or a timed item. If attending in person today, we kindly request that once you have commented on your item, return to your seat or leave the hearing room from the exit-only door to accommodate for physical distancing and allow for others to provide an in-person public comment. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. So at this time, EJ, if you could provide your report.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. EJ Avaldi with the Planning Services Division. Just a few quick things. Yesterday, the TRPA Governing Board took up the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, the housing-related code amendments. If you remember, your commission voted to approve those. That did get approved. I don't know what the vote was, but I just heard that it was approved, so we'll be making those changes to our area plan. And then, let's see, for the board meeting, March 9th is when the board will be taking final action on the Crowley setback variance appeal. As I let you know last, at the last meeting, they did take tentative action to approve that variance, so they'll be taking final action on the March 9th meeting. And then, for upcoming Planning Commission meetings, there's no lull in meetings coming up. So, March 11th is the next meeting, fairly light agenda. We're going to be doing a workshop on the health and safety element update. That document is, or draft document, is on the county's website right now. And then, the second meeting in March, we will also be holding, and then into April, we have items lined up. Oh, and most importantly, the Get Involved project is going to be going to the board on a special meeting date of March 8th. That's on Monday, I believe. Thank you, Clayton. And that's all I have.
All right. Before the meeting, I talked to Clayton, but could you, one of the things I think, I understand there are some changes in law regarding the Brown Act. So, it'd be great if we had a presentation, but Clayton, if you could just inform the commission of the new regulations and regarding social media.
Sure. Yeah, no, happy to do so. And as of January 1st this year, there are changes to the Brown Act that include social media presence. And basically, the requirement under the Brown Act for social media is that commissioners are not allowed to post, or comment, or like, or otherwise repost a comment that is made by another commissioner. That could be a potential Brown Act violation. So, it just basically means when it comes to social media presence, you just have to be very careful not to do any of those activities for items that potentially could come in front of the commission. So, just be very careful on the social media presence.
Thank you. I will now open the public comment for any matters not on the Planning Commission agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on items not on the agenda? And Sue, do we have any hands? Okay, in that case, I will close the public comment period for matters not on the agenda at this time. We now move on to the consent agenda. Would any commissioner like to remove the one item from the consent agenda? All right. And does anyone from the public want to remove anything from the, the one item from the consent item? Is there anyone in the audience? And Sue, do we have any raised hands? Okay. So at this time, then, I would look for the commission to make a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion for approval?
All right. We have a motion for approval. Second?
And I'll make a second then.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Sue, if you could call the roll.
I have a first from Mr. Cannon, and a second, I believe, came from Mr. Hersog.
Mr. Johnson? I thought it was Mr. Johnson, but.
I was first.
Oh, okay. Okay, we'll let him.
We'll have a little competition.
So, and a second by Mr. Hersog. So, could I have a vote for Mr. Cannon, please?
Yes.
Mr. Di Mattei?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We are moving on to our first timed item, the appeal of the zoning administrator's denial of a minor use permit for an AT&amp;T cell tower on Millerton Road in Auburn. This item was continued from the February 11th Planning Commission meeting. Members of the public may now raise their hands, or press *9 if you're calling in, to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Bennett Smith-Hart, associate planner, will be presenting the item.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. I am Bennett Smith-Hart with the Planning Services Division. Our next item is an appeal of the zoning administrator's denial of a minor use permit for a new communications tower in the Ofer area. The subject parcel is located at 545 Millertown Road in the Ofer area, just west of Auburn. The subject parcel is a 6.3-acre site, and it is zoned residential agriculture, combining a midroom building site of 100,000 square feet. On the parcel, there's a single-family dwelling, a detached garage, and some accessory structures. So, staff received an application request for a minor use permit for a cellular tower, and this is an 88-foot tower. So, the tower itself is 83 feet, but there are five feet of fake foliage on top because it's a minor, or a monopine tower. It will have antennas and an equipment cabinet at the bottom of the tower. And they're planning on building a driveway to this tower that will connect from the entrance next to the detached garage on site. There's an existing driveway. They'll use that area to get equipment and trucks up to the site. With the construction, it looks like they're avoiding any trees, tree removal, but they're aware that they'll need to get a tree permit to remove trees if that's, if that's their intention. With the tower itself, it will be a normal cellular tower, but it'll have a couple other things as well. They'll have the first net, so there'll be some communication infrastructure on this tower that first responders can use. It'll be dedicated for first responders, and they can use that. And it will have, and it's a part of the Connect America Fund, and that'll provide broadband internet to the surrounding parcels. Next, so here's an architectural elevation of the tower. Just to explain some stuff here, the top part will be the AT&amp;T equipment that I discussed in the previous slides. Then about middle ways, there'll be some opportunities for co-locating, so other communications companies could come and co-locate on this tower. And at the bottom, we'll have a CMU wall. At our last Planning Commission hearing, commissioners requested the CMU wall to protect for fire and things like that, so it'll be a generator on site, and they wanted to have that protection, or your commission wanted to have that protection. Next, the appellant originally submitted some visual simulations of the tower on the left side. It's on the southeast corner of the site, looking to the northwest, so you can see the tower right here. The right side, this is looking in a southwest direction toward the site, and so this is the 88-foot tower right here. And this is another simulation. This is from a property northwest of the subject site, and this is the, would be the monopine tower right here. Next, so as a minor use permit, it started at the zoning administrator. So, at the September 19th, 2019 zoning administrator, before the hearing, and during the hearing, we received public comment about the visual impact of constructing this tower and how this impacts the community character of this rural community. Also, health and safety issues were brought up, and these included, but not limited to, traffic and fire. During the first zoning administrator hearing, the applicant did revise the project to have a smaller tower. It was originally proposed at 120 feet, and they reduced that to 88 feet. And they added the wood fence and the roof structure later changed by your commission. During this hearing, the zoning administrator was concerned about some of the items that were brought up, and he needed a little further research, so he continued that to the October 17th, 2019 hearing. At the, at that hearing, additional public comment was received under the same topics that were discussed previously, and this time, we did have one individual speaking in support of that. She, you know, was supportive of having faster internet out in the Ofer community. During this hearing, the applicant said the tower is compatible with the vicinity and presents no safety concerns. After deliberation, the zoning administrator denied the minor use permit, saying it was not compatible with the surrounding company, community, and there was visual impacts to the immediate environment. On October 28th, staff received the appeal from Epic Wireless on behalf of AT&amp;T of the zoning administrator's decision, the appellant. At the January 9th hearing, we had seven individuals speak in opposition to the tower and one individual speaking in support of it, addressing topics that we discussed on the previous slide. Your commission discussed the need for the communications towers for first responders and law enforcement, and your commission was tentatively approved the minor use permit, pending staff's preparation of findings and modified conditions of approval and completion of sequer review. So, in your direction, staff went to prepare the conditions of approval and the sequer review. One of the typical, a lot of folks were bringing up that this property is historic, there's some unique historic aspects, and so hearing that over and over again, we thought it'd be best to, you know, see what's factually historic on site before we make a sequel determination. So, we worked with the appellant, and we got a historic architectural assessment completed of the site that was submitted to us on January 7th, 2021, and it concludes the building is not historic property under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, and because it's not, and because of so, it's not eligible for the National Registry under criterion A, B, C, or D. Therefore, staff recommends the following. Find the project is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to provisions of Section 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines and Section 183650 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance. And to grant the appeal filed by the project applicant of the zoning administrator's decision to deny the project and approve the minor use permit, supported by findings and subject to the modified conditions contained in the staff report. Myself and my colleague in engineering are available if you have any questions.
Does the commission have any questions?
Yeah, I had a question on the description of what this looks like. It's 83 feet tall with only five foot of foliage?
That's correct.
You go back to the pictures, that one there, that looks like less than, more than five feet of foliage. Is that what it's going to look like, or is, the ones I've seen?
So, the five feet is, is up here.
So, the rest of it's not going to be full of foliage? That's just?
The foliage, is it kind of screened out in the back, but this, this is kind of the shape it'll take.
So, the foliage will go down to the bottom, or just to the top?
Yes, it will start from five feet above the physical tower itself and go all the way down near the base, kind of mimicking a typical tree where the branches don't go all the way to the?
Okay. The way I read it, it just sounded like it was going to be on top, that's why I was asking.
Gotcha.
Okay, thanks, Bennett.
Any other questions from the commission? If not, at this time, let's open up for public comment, and everyone will have three minute. Oh, I'm sorry, the applicant, I'm sorry. Okay, let's start with the appellant. I'm sorry about that. So, Sue, if you could bring the?
Hi, my name is Jared Curzly. Am I able to be heard?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Jared Curzly, on behalf of AT&amp;T, the appellate applicant for the project. I don't really have too much to add, honestly, to Bennett's presentation. We also have Bryant Malesy here on, on behalf of AT&amp;T. He's external affairs, can discuss more in depth about the CAF II project or FirstNet aspect of the project, if there's any questions pertaining to those topics. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time. We also have Kathleen Crawford, the historian, available online. She doesn't have capabilities to have virtual camera, but she's available by phone in the instance that there's questions for the historian relating to the cultural and historical aspect of the property. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time from the commissioners.
All right. Commissioners, do we have any questions of the applicant?
I guess you do.
Okay.
Yep. I'm kind of recollecting back, but basically, FirstNet is one of the purposes of this tower, but are there other, I guess, initiatives or purposes that AT&amp;T is pursuing by wanting to have this tower in this location?
Yeah, so this, Jared Curzly again, this tower is going to fulfill three main services to the public and, and first responders. One being typical cellphone usage, meaning voice and data technology, whether it's, you know, streaming videos on your, your phone, or having a booster in your house that connects to the tower essentially can also be utilized for streaming purposes, downloading purposes, or just browsing the web, and then, of course, your, your voice calls. And then, the second aspect is the CAF II project, and that's Connect America Fund, providing wireless high-speed broadband internet to the surrounding community via a wireless signal. Basically, any, any person who signs up for AT&amp;T high-speed broadband internet to the service will have an installation of a small antenna on their property somewhere with a good vantage point to the tower, and that's essentially how they will get their wireless broadband internet to their house. Third is the FirstNet aspect, and FirstNet, actually, I could let Bryant jump in here and, and go over that if, if she wishes.
Yeah, so FirstNet, FirstNet Authority was created by the United States Congress in 2012 through the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act. AT&amp;T has the main contract with the FirstNet Authority, which is a federal agency, and over the last three, four years, we've been building out this, this separate wireless network dedicated to first responders throughout the country. And Northern California especially has been an important area for the FirstNet Authority due to the wildfires over the last couple of years, especially this past year, and so we've been working with fire and police agencies throughout California, and especially in Northern California as well throughout the year, and especially during the wildfire time, to make sure they have the best response they can while they're responding to the wildfires. And that's what we're trying to do here for the Placer County and Auburn area as well.
Okay, thank you. Other questions of the commission? One of the things that comes up in the correspondence is that there's alternate locations that this site would serve. Could you discuss that?
Yeah, Jared Curzly with AT&amp;T. Basically, we did look into alternative sites. This particular site off of, on Millertown, off of Wise Road, is situated basically in the middle of two adjacent sites, one to the northeast and one to the southeast, and this site off Wise Road fills a significant gap in coverage and also fulfills the living unit requirements for this area, and then, of course, provides the FirstNet response services. So, when we looked at alternative site analysis, some were too close to the two other adjacent sites that would conflict with the services provided, and, and others, they just had, the elevation wasn't there, just wasn't maybe, I think the PNE station was in the canyon, so it just wouldn't work out for radio frequency purposes, coverage purposes.
All right. Any other questions of the commission? Tony?
I drove through that area this morning, actually, for the, not the first time, but I did notice that it's pretty heavily wooded, and why would not an alternate site that maybe was less in the woods if that was to catch fire? It's really not going to serve any purpose, purpose to the first responders if that thing's on fire. I would think they would probably go in an area that was maybe closer to the freeway, less subject to having fires.
The two sites to the northeast and southwest, southeast are, are more or less along the AD corridor in a sense. This site being, being too close to the AD corridor wouldn't serve the living unit, so the, the really main goal of placing this where it is is fulfilling the living unit abilities while filling a coverage gap as well. So, if we go to the 80s corridor, then we're not covering any homes for internet and depleting the, the purpose of, the main purpose of this project, locating where we're at. So, you know, typically cell towers, you know, of course, if the whole area catches fire, then yeah, there's an issue. You know, that could happen along the freeway as well, as we saw last year in the Fairfield area, Bay Area. So, you know, if fires can happen anywhere, and I agree, it's wooded, but that also goes into, in line with it being more stealth from the adjacent properties, and it's quite stealth, you know, quite well, stealthed quite well. So, you know, I think there's, of course, some negatives, negatives to that, but of course, there's also some positives, so.
Also, is there a large demand from the people in that area to have a tower and to get more service or better service? Because I've been there plenty of times and have never lost service.
Yeah, good question. So, AT&amp;T has a lot of sophisticated tools that they utilize, software programs that will figure out basically where they need the tower. They, they go off of drop calls, you know, maybe slow speeds, lag rates such as that, and then, of course, the First, the CAF II aspect, AT&amp;T doesn't have any, any presence for providing high-speed broadband internet, period, in this Ofer area. So, adding that technology to its community can, can, you know, get a lot of utilization from, from surrounding property owners. They may have possibly another means of internet, but of course, every carrier or service provider has to be treated separately, and just because one may exist, they have to allow the applicant, in this case, AT&amp;T, to exist as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the commission? If not, now, we'll open it up for public comments, so everyone will have three minutes. So, we'll start with those here in the audience, and then Sue, if you'll monitor those online, so.
Chair, before we start public comment, if you could, I'd like, this, this application does have some legal components to it.
All right.
I would like the opportunity to just refresh commissioners on those legal components and.
Thank you.
Maybe update the new commissioners as well. So, the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 does have some application to this process. It specifically indicates in that act that local agencies are not allowed to make determinations on wireless service facilities on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that those facilities comply with the commission's, the FCC Commission's regulations concerning such emissions. So, during your deliberations today, you're not allowed to consider health concerns about biological effects of radio frequency radiation and environmental effects of those, as long as the facility is in compliance with the FCC's regulations, which I understand it is. So, just something to be aware of. The other thing is, and it's been somewhat alluded to in some of the comments so far, there is one restriction that prevents a local agency from prohibiting or taking action that has the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services. And what that basically means is, and there's been some case analysis of this, but if in fact there is a significant gap in service coverage, and the provider has showed that the manner in which it proposes to fill that gap in services is the least intrusive on the value, then the commission does not have the authority to deny that application. So, it's a two-part showing. One, they have to show that there is a gap in service, and two, that they have evaluated other sites and determined that this is the least intrusive site. So, those are the two facts you would have to find if you were to consider the fact, consider potentially denying this application. I do understand that the commission has tentatively approved this in the last commission hearing, but I wanted to make sure you are at least aware of those ground rules as you proceed today.
All right, thank you. Okay. So, do you have a list, then?
Yeah, Chairman, I do have six individuals have signed up, so I'll read three names first in, in order, and then, then we can, you can open it up after that as well.
Thank you.
So, the first three names, Maria Varanowski, Mark Rideout, and I think it says Arthur Olson.
Come on up to the microphone.
Right here.
Yep.
I'm Maria Varanowski. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and thank you for your consideration. I have so many things to say, and I've only got three minutes, but firstly, there are trees shown on the plans to be removed if trees are deciduous, so the photographs that you saw are in the middle of leaf season, not deciduous season. And the landowner is systematically cutting down trees on his property, so that has some effect. We get internet just fine. We stream, we do everything, the phone's fine, so I don't know what that's all about. Okay, so, really what I wanted to talk today about is historic preservation, zoning, and the Ofer general plan. So, firstly, historic preservation, and I know Kathleen's on the line. So, essentially, the determination for listing has a process, and that process includes identifying context, which really isn't completely done. So, I think that's certainly a, a deep and strong consideration, because without knowing your context, you can't really make a determination. Secondly, the area of potential effect, really just the house was analyzed. That property, in my limited analysis of the Ofer area, is really fascinating. It's at the confluence of It's at the confluence of the Auburn Ravine and the North Ravine. There are prehistoric settlements, there's sites, I think Kathleen said there's two identified sites, there's a lot of sites there. There's mining, there's, you know, gold was not discovered at Sellers Ford, it was discovered at Auburn Ravine. Okay, so that's historic preservation. County zoning, Chapter 17, 1756. It says, antenna which are not visually obtrusive except antenna which are being co-located on existing improving towers shall only require administrative approval. That means they can raise it 20 feet and there's no, there's no further hearing. Secondly, any such installation shall be found not to create potential for adverse noise, access, and grading. All of those have been proven to be not workable. The generator creates noise, the traffic survey has been done, there's a poor line of sight, and there are grading problems. My property's on the other side. Millertown drains through my property. And there's an OFER general plan and it states, protect your community, honor it, honor the historic preservation, honor the historic site. There are goals and policies for that, which this project doesn't meet. And I could quote those if you'd let me.
Actually, your three minutes is up, so if you could wrap it up, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I'm Mark Rideout. I live at 10465 Dutchman's Mine Road in Auburn. As I've described before, my family's lived on the property for almost 100 years. I recently retired from Placer County and over my 28-year career held positions in architecture, real estate, and leadership. Through my education and experience, I can say this is the wrong location for a tower. As I've offered previously and stated to you in my February 22nd letter, I volunteer to assist a collaborative process to choose the correct location for a tower, similar to what we did for numerous county initiatives to cite difficult uses. The zoning administrator accurately analyzed the neighborhood compatibility. He determined the project would be detrimental and have an adverse effect on residents and the surrounding property owners. This condition conflicts with the findings and the categorical exemption that's required for approval. The presentations, analysis, and deliberation of this project are not linear. Logical errors and incorrect facts do not support staff's recommendation. The project describes an 88-foot tower, yet AT&amp;T couldn't subsequently raise it without additional approval. This unilateral ability is not disclosed to the public, nor is it modeled with visual simulations nor FCC analysis. This deficiency does not support the findings nor recommendation. Secondly, the FCC analysis of radio frequency impacts is flawed because it analyzes the tower located in a different portion of the property than the proposed tower site. The historic analysis does not evaluate project impacts on the broad history of the gold rush and the historic OFER gold mining district. Comprehensive clearance in this regard is required to support the recommendations. The County of Placer supports its museums division and encourages historic tourism. It wants to ensure the safety and comfort of its residents, as do you on the Commission. I urge you to deny the appeal and direct staff to work with the applicant and community to cite a robust expandable tower which could be sized to co-locate county network services with a location along OFER Road in one of the private parcels that zoned industrial park or heavy commercial or on a publicly owned parcel. And just to quickly respond to a few of the items in the presentation today, it's not stealth. When you're standing on Millertown Road this morning and you're looking at the fuels work the neighbors done, you can see the tower clearly without the leaves. Nothing was concrete of the analysis, there's been no concrete demonstration of the significant gap or the provider showing that they've evaluated other sites. The gentleman has described that verbally. And AT&amp;T and Verizon have good coverage in the area. I have a Verizon hotspot, it works fine. We don't need cellular expansion area. And the public, and the county has public safety connectivity through its existing arrangements and this is not a necessary enhancement. I thank you for your service and your time this morning.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Arthur Olson. I live at 693 Millertown Road. The questions I have is with all the tree ports that have been done with AT&amp;T, with the county, nobody's ever went out and actually measured the height of the trees surrounding of the cell phone tower? I know a while back Bennett came out with the planning department and they flew an 88-foot red balloon at the cell phone tower site so neighbors could see how tall it was. But yet AT&amp;T was supposed to hire a contractor, photographer, to go around five different areas and take these photographs and then submit them in report. None of those red balloons are in the pictures at all. And these, all these simulations that the AT&amp;T provided are all bogus because here in particular, where the landowners who test garages, the cell phone tower is supposed to be directly behind here. A couple of weeks after the last hearing Supervisor Holmes actually came out on the site, we weren't allowed because of the property owner, he had no trespassing signs, so we couldn't go him up until Supervisor Holmes came onboard. We followed him up. We actually found out instead of the tower being directly behind the west of the garage, it's actually up here on the slope, probably about 100 feet away. So I'd like to know from the perspective is, why aren't these balloon photographs in the report when AT&amp;T is saying that the tower is going to blend in with the natural trees in the area? And by the way, I have AT&amp;T, I have five stars on my phone, my wife has an Apple 9, she has five stars on her phone. We can Google while we're watching TV, we have plenty of internet speed on our computers, so we don't have to have any additional coverage. And first responders' coverage is also covered by Verizon in our area, so AT&amp;T would have to win that contract in order to get it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next three on the list are Laurel Braziz, Helga White, and Doug.
What was your name so that, I'm a director now?
Helga White, I have four conditions.
All right.
Laurel?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Laurel Braziz, an OFER resident for the last 15 years. The comment was made, we get internet just fine. And that may be the case for some OFER residents. I can state emphatically for our household, that is not the case. AT&amp;T is our cell phone provider and has been for many, many years because they are the only provider that actually services our home. We've tried to use other providers. That being said, we still only get one bar on their service, but it's enough that we can use a cell phone at our house. Since the last hearing, we now are in this pandemic, and now I can fully attest to the impact that this lack of internet service has had on kids that are trying to learn at home through this distance learning environment. And it has been a struggle. We have three children, and if you're in our house, you would hear, Wi-Fi went down. You'd hear, I can't get connected, I'm disconnected from my class, everything's frozen up. I have turned into an IT specialist in my home and have improved just the router to try to clean up our connection as best I can. We're still, we're working with four megabits of download speed when the average is around 100 megabits. And we pay a premium for this trickle of service. We can't connect to other broadband services. We use AT&amp;T for our home internet as well. And all we have right now is DSL. And AT&amp;T will not improve the internet connection coverage for home service in our area. So I just want to make that clear as well. When it's tough, when people talk about like fixed wireless towers, because of the topography, the beautiful topography of OFER, we can't connect to what is available currently. That includes CalNet. They have come to our home, we have a rather large tree. They said you might be able to get an arborist to put a connector on the top of that tree, but we're looking at at least $1,000 to maybe connect to a service that they can't guarantee. I don't know that it was mentioned, I believe that in the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996, it also stipulates that aesthetic harm cannot be a reason to deny a cell phone tower. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others?
And then on the list.
On the list, okay. So Sue, do we have, yes, we do. So we'll let Sue bring them in.
Mr. Garabedian, state your name and unmute, please.
Good morning. This is Michael Garabedian with Placer County tomorrow. I live in Lincoln. I am pleased to have an opportunity, unusually pleased, pleased to support the decision of the zoning administrator. In September, September of 2019, I attended all three days of the EMF, electromagnetic frequency medical conference. There can be no doubt that EMF has a medical impact, clearly for people who are highly sensitive, clearly something that we would expect, AT&amp;T is my phone service, we would expect this corporation regardless of the law. The law does not stop them from saying, we want to help deal with the problems that this, this technology creates. It's embarrassing really that they won't own up to that or might hide behind the legality. Now, of course, there is a legal challenge to this law, there are efforts to change the law in Congress and so forth. So I'm concerned, I don't agree with the appeal, should really be addressing those as part of its response, public responsibility to the health and welfare of the people. So I hope you should deny the appeal. And thanks for this opportunity this morning.
Thank you. All right. Last call, anyone in the audience or anyone online? Okay, I see two people in the audience, so. Come on up and state your name for the record.
I'm Doug Van Houtt, I live across the street from the proposed tower. I've lived there for 48 years. You know, you listen to all the professionals that are speaking, they're nationally in the business and they're for the tower, but as a resident there, this thing being put in a residential community, I just feel like it's not right. And for us, it would impact us. And so I just ask you, would you like this across the street from you? I mean, that's what it amounts to. I'm sure that the tower's wonderful, but there's so many open areas in our area, I don't know why it would go in this residential area. Just closer to the freeway, there's a lot of PG&E property, there's, it's all vacant. It's just, it's hard for me to imagine. The owner of the property inherited this property from their parents. They live in Arizona. They come here briefly, back and forth to the, this is the very old place that's there. So they're not even around most of the time. And I asked them one day, I said, why are you doing this? And they said, well, it gives us the extra money to travel. And, you know, so they're really not concerned about us, the neighbors. And that's all my comments.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, if not, I'm going to, oh, we have a, oh, come on forward, please.
I wasn't going to speak, but I just can't help myself.
All right.
I'm CEO George, I'm at 677 Millertown Road. And if you look back at the pictures of the drawings, or I should say of the land, we were that third picture, so that picture is from our backyard with that huge fake tree. We have three and a half acres and, you know, chickens and gardens and that kind of stuff and a child that's still in school. And so I know we can't talk about the health reasons supposedly, but that's a concern. And then also just aesthetically of having this huge tree in our backyard and at the entrance to OFER and Millertown and having it be there is just wrong. And also for number three of the, I'm going to remember right, health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare of why the zoning administrator had denied it is still an effect. So I would appreciate a denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking around, anyone else? And Sue, no one else on the, all right. So at this time, I'll close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the Commission and actually staff. There were some items brought up, so between yourself and the applicant, if you could begin to answer those questions, that'd be very helpful. So let's start with you responding to some of the items that came up in the public comments and then you're probably going to have staff ask, or Commission asking you questions.
All right, any specifics or you just want me to go for it?
Well, looking at it, you know, the issue of noise came up, the issue of access, the issue of grading, the historic issue, the, the tower moved to a different site based on the FCC analysis, the proof of the need, what happened to the balloon photos, so.
Gotcha. I'll try to, if I miss one, let me know. Of the staff reports, the balloon photos are on page 137, they're kind of hard to see because photographs were taken farther away and it's basically a pink colored balloon, but they're on kind of the end of the attachment E of the staff report. So they mentioned noise, noise would be from the generator. They are putting a noise shroud on the generator. I don't have the decibels in front of me, but it's, it would, I believe it's about over 20 feet away, I believe it'd be difficult to hear. So they did have, and this is fairly typical of communications towers, to have this noise protection over it, so that you would not expect to hear loud noises from this. I believe there was some more discussion from other communications towers in the area. Some of them in their equipment cabinet have fan and air conditioning in them, and I think I believe some members of the public brought up that. And noise with that would be fairly limited. I believe the applicant, Mike, can speak on behalf of noise, but everything we reviewed didn't indicate any loud noises and these noises would just be, it wouldn't be constant, it would be, you know, various times when like the generator, if power went out, the generator would be on. I believe they do some regular maintenance to the generator, but generally it'd be the power would have to be out for the generator to be running, emergency situations. Let's see, next, I believe one of the historic aspects, we did get the historic analysis, it was very thorough, they did not deem that to be historic property. So I know the members of the public have brought up some conflicting information, but since we have, you know, this on the record, we're going that it's not a historic property and this tower's not impacting a historic property, that's why we use the sequel exemption. So we can't use a sequel exemption if we don't have, you know, if there's impacts to a historic property. So we had to confirm that prior to using the sequel exemption. Traffic, and Eric, Mike, and hop on for me, but my understanding, since there are so few trips- Traffic and Eric, Mike and Hop on for me. But my understanding, since there are so few trips associated with the, as it's constructed, you know, maybe once a month or once a quarter, a truck might go in to maintain the facilities. But due to that, it doesn't trip any traffic standards for us to do a thorough analysis. But that was my understanding from that. So just very, very few trips associated with this tower. So they do not require any traffic analysis or any studies.
That is an existing driveway they're using. Is that correct?
That is correct, an existing driveway. And they'll have to improve the the driveway up to engineering standard for the utility trucks that will be going to the site to do their work.
Right.
Hey, Ben, I'd be happy to jump in on that, too, if you'd like. So we actually, DPWM, myself, this is Eric with Engineering and Surveying, we went out to the site and did traffic, not really an analysis, but we went out there and we took the the speed limits of up to 50 to 100 cars over a two-hour period. And they were around about 35 mile per hour or under. So we felt that with them following the speed limit, coming out of that turn and going towards the stop sign, plus the fact that it's an existing driveway that they're improving, that traffic is going to be essentially negligible with two trips per month.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Was there anything else I needed to address?
The issue of grading came up, and I'm not sure what that issue was because I don't, you're not, you're improving that existing driveway, but I didn't think there was grading required for that.
So there's grading with, I believe, if I'm speaking correctly, the grading was associated with building the foundation of the tower.
Okay.
You might have to dig in a little bit. There's some oak trees nearby. And I think there was some concerns of of the deep grading impacting roots and things like that, maybe impacting rock outcrops in this property. So, you know, it sounds like it might be a a deeper foundation. So there's concern with aesthetic impacts, tree removal, rocking, rock out crap, out crops, like I said correctly.
The neighbor was concerned about drainage, if I recall. That was her comment. And we're currently not requiring a grading permit for this. But if that was part of your decision, we can require a grading permit and look at the drainage at the time when it's submitted.
All right.
One thing I wanted to note as well, in terms of our aesthetic discussion, one thing I want to note that Millertown Road is is really curvy, really meandering. So if you're not aware of this tree and you're driving, you likely won't see it.
Okay. Could you discuss, the comment was made that the tower placement was moved and the FCC analysis of its impacts was on a different site on the same property, but in a different location. What was that about?
I know when we first got to the first September 19 zoning administrator hearing, I believe one of the documents might have been incorrectly scaled. So somebody tried to replicate it or measure it and got some incorrect numbers. But we verified that that was correct. So everything I've seen, the cell tower's been in the the location as how it was presented today.
All right.
Yeah, right. Okay, yeah, there was a comment about the location of the tower in the photographs that we see where it's mocked in. And that there was, at least in that comment, it was saying that the tower wasn't going to be where the photograph showed. And so I guess, is there some assurance that those, you know, the the mocked in towers in the photographs are actually where the tower will be?
So I was on site. So one of the things that the applicant did, they they got a photographer to go out and fly a balloon at 88 feet. So that that is also on page one, attachment E, page 137. So they went out on the exact site, put a balloon on a rope 88 feet. They went and took pictures from all these locations. And if you review that, you'll see the balloon is basically the tip of all of these. They used the balloon to do the simulations. That was the revisions. They submitted the original ones at 120 feet prior to the zoning administrator where they changed it to 88 feet. So they went back and revised and then they went back and added the the balloon photographs.
Okay, yeah, maybe you could show the picture of the garage.
I believe it's right before attachment E. At the end of E, there's the picture of the garage.
143.
I think 140. 137 has the picture not correctly. That's the existing driveway garage.
I think 143 has the balloon included.
Yes, 143 is the garage on site. The existing garage. And that is the driveway we're talking about right from the side of it.
Is there any talk on here?
Well, somehow the commenter had a picture of the garage. And he was talking about going out there and the tree was in a different place than the picture showed.
I don't think I've seen that. Everything I've seen has the trees in the same location, all the simulations they provided and the balloons.
So at least, I guess, as far as your review is at the.
Correct. Yes, with our review, we did not see any inconsistencies with the simulations or the site plan.
Tower.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. I think you hit everything. So other questions? Yeah.
For AT&amp;T, is there options to have fiber put out for these people to have internet service? And why not? Because there are already telephone poles out there. Why can it not be strung out? And is the cost too prohibitive for AT&amp;T to provide for their customers that they have to go put a tower up?
I can, I know there's not AT&amp;T fiber in that area at the moment. I know we are extending our fiber footprint in the Placer County area. I can check back with our network teams and see if there are any plans for the Auburn-Ober area and get back to the planning commission on that.
And is the fiber more efficient than putting this tower?
For more rural areas and in Placer County, our main broadband build out over the last couple of years has been this fixed wireless internet. We haven't extended fiber internet much into rural areas in Northern California. It's mostly urban, high populated suburban areas for AT&amp;T fiber. So to bring broadband internet to more rural areas, or Placer County, El Dorado County, Nevada County areas, we've been using the fixed wireless internet.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question, I guess. There's concern about putting the tower in a residential area, even though this is agricultural residential. And so I guess what I'm puzzling about is, you know, I could think of a tower in the city of Auburn. And you go down Auburn-Folsom Road, next to the fire stations. Down there, you see a tower. And so you do see these towers around the area. So I guess I'm questioning the issue of putting a tower in a residential area.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, comparing that with where the other towers might be, where other towers might be.
Gotcha. And we 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 did some research. We're trying to find a map of all the towers. Because there's a, there's a lot of towers around, you know, everywhere, every urban area. And sometimes you just don't see them. If you had a map, you know, do that, but Placer County doesn't keep a map of all the existing cell towers. But there there are some in residential areas, some are in commercials. I think typically, I guess this is my opinion, but the ones in commercial areas are probably not surrounded by trees. And those are the ones you just see. The ones in residential area might be surrounded by other objects that kind of blend in a little well. So the commercial, industrial monopines or towers might just be more visible so the public are aware.
Okay. And maybe from the applicant's spokesman's, you know, you, obviously, you must have other towers in Placer County. And so.
Yeah, Jared Bruce here with with AT&amp;T. Yeah, you're you're right. There there's towers in Placer County that exist in rural residential neighborhoods. I worked on one personally on the border of Auburn and Lincoln. And it was an existing Verizon site that we co-located on to provide the same exact services that this tower's utilizing, going to be providing. In Placer County, there's another handful of CAF II projects that, again, revolve around rural residential neighborhoods. I personally worked on upwards of 30, 35 sites in El Dorado County, which, as we all know, is very similar in nature to Placer County. And out of all those sites, I believe upwards of 20, 25 have been deployed in El Dorado County and all within rural residential neighborhoods.
Okay, yeah, thank you on that. I just was kind of puzzling what was unique here versus maybe some of the other places you've worked on. And then I see you did have another, oh. One, one question that came up or comment that came up was that the AT&amp;T service in the area is already fine. And so, you know, why, why do we need this enhancement to the local services going on with a lot of people that have AT&amp;T already? So I see.
Yeah, Jared Bruce was at the top. I'm sorry.
Well, I, yeah, I just didn't know if I if I answered the, asked the question clearly. But, you know, some of the, some of the people that commented said that they had fine AT&amp;T service already. So they're saying, why do we need this?
Right. And and that may be the case in some instances. And we also heard the exact opposite, that they don't have great service. You know, at the end of the day, AT&amp;T is not going to invest upwards of $500,000 to $1 million in a, in a tower when they already have good coverage. That's just not their business model. So our coverage map does show a a gap in coverage, and that's been provided to the county. The gap in coverage does exist. Typically, where the towers go, higher lands, you'll get triple in coverage or maybe decent coverage because you're on higher lands and and the adjacent site gets to you. But then in the, in the little valleys and along the roadways, your, your, your coverage becomes either spotty or or, you know, nonexistent. So to answer your question, yeah, it is possible that some folks have decent coverage up there. I've been to the site. I have AT&amp;T and I have a couple bars over on Millertown Road. But then you drive away and before you know it, you're, you're, you're out of coverage. So it just depends on where you're at and what kind of services you have. But again, they're not going to build a site where they already have coverage and, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more question for AT&amp;T. That one resident that's here that does not have coverage, is there proof that this would help her or the residents around? Is there any stat showing that you're going to put this up and she doesn't have to go cut trees down or other residents don't have to cut trees down to have that line of sight for their properties?
Yes, we are aware of where her property is located and we cross-checked that with the coverage map. And she is, you know, supposed to gain, gain coverage from this, this, the tower. So it will benefit her property and the surrounding properties in her community according to our coverage maps.
And there's no way to put a satellite tower like I have on my ranch because I'm out in the middle of nowhere as well, that can reflect from her property to beam off of one of your other towers to help her out in the meantime? Because I would imagine it's going to take a while.
No. Well, on the, on the CAF II, I'm sorry, on the AT&amp;T website for fixed wireless loop, anyone can throw in their address and see if it's available. It's not available currently for her address. This tower will be serving that area. There is no adjacent site that will serve her area. She, her, her area is a little lower in elevation and just doesn't have vision to to any other tower.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions?
Just one question. During, during the conversation with the residents, a couple mentioned that AT&amp;T could raise the, the tower's height without additional authorization. Is that an accurate statement? And if so, should it be approved? And the commissioners wanted to restrict that authority, could we do so?
So so in Placer County, we do require a permit to do that. So if they wanted to co-locate or extend the tower as allowed by federal law, I believe it's 20% or 10 feet, whichever's less.
Whichever's greater.
Whichever's greater, okay, sorry. Whichever's greater. So they are by federal law allowed to do that, but they do have to come in and get a permit or some kind of staff review prior to that. So they can't just go out and extend it without telling the county. We do have our, in our ordinance, we do require either administrative permit or minor use term permit, depending on what they're doing.
And just to follow up on that, too. Since it is a creature of federal law, the county can't prohibit them from doing it.
So I'd like to add some color to that if you, if you wish, Jared, you're AT&amp;T. Yeah, so we, we, we are building the site for co-location opportunities. On, as Bennett showed earlier, on our elevation pages, we show placeholders for future carriers. The main reason when we, when extensions need to, need to happen is when there's no space below. Maybe a tower was built too short originally. Maybe there's already two other, three other carriers. So the, you know, third or fourth carrier coming on the tower says, well, we don't have anywhere to go. We need to extend it by one more, you know, center line, in a sense. That's when that usually takes place. You know, once this tower is built on there, it's not going to be AT&amp;T's prerogative to say, we, we want 20 more feet. So we're going to do that. That's just not, again, their, their business model. And they already made 88 feet work in this case, and that's what they're going to be utilizing here.
Okay.
So if it needs to go taller, why would you just not build it at a higher elevation?
I'm sorry?
If it, if the tower in the future needs to be higher, or this is not high enough, why would you build it at a lower elevation to begin with? Why not just go up the road where it's, obviously, we live in the mountains. There's a lot taller elevations.
Yeah, right now, this tower doesn't need to be any higher or taller than it, than it is. It works just fine. It performs just fine at the, you know, proposed height at 88.
That's for today's, for today's technology, though, right? So we don't know what's coming down the future, but obviously, technology changes and gets better every day, as we've seen. So in the future, do you see that happening? Or the tower is going to be maybe obsolete in the future, or it's going to have to be taller with better technology?
I don't foresee that happening, no.
Okay.
Chair, if I could, I'd like to just add a couple of legal comments. There were a couple, couple things that were raised that I just feel like should be addressed. The first one was, there were comments about there being Verizon service and so there may not be a need for AT&amp;T service. To the extent your commission is looking at that issue of whether or not there is a significant gap in coverage, that is decided on a provider-by-provided basis. So because another provider has coverage there, it doesn't necessarily mean that you can exclude AT&amp;T if in fact AT&amp;T does have a coverage gap there. And then there was also a question raised about whether or not aesthetics could be a reason to deny. Under the Federal Telecommunications Act, there's no restrictions on aesthetics. That certainly is one of the valid grounds that your commission could look at. In fact, as part of analyzing this permit and making a determination on it, you would be asked to determine whether or not this use is consistent with the character of the immediate neighborhood, which would include an aesthetic evaluation. So that is certainly within your purview. include an aesthetic evaluation. So that is certainly within your purview to decide and analyze as part of your decision.
All right. Thank you, Clayton. Any other questions of the commission of staff or AT&amp;T?
I guess this is almost a, a comment.
So we're going into the discussion?
Uh, no, this is.
Oh, okay.
Maybe this is a question, maybe it's a comment. At any rate, I wanted to address that, uh, there was one concern raised about the fact that, uh, the local fire people have access to Verizon in the area. And, uh, I think one of the things that I'm hearing is with the AT&amp;T, they have a, kind of a national contract, which, and I know of fire people that would come into this area from outside the area, will all have a, a radio frequency or ability to access the AT&amp;T, uh, emergency services network. And so the fact that, uh, the Placer County fire people have Verizon access is true, but, uh, I think it's important to consider the fact that might, that the firefighters that come from outside the area and have the, uh, AT&amp;T ability are able to use that. So that's just a comment about that part of it.
Okay. Thank you for helping us. Uh, so at this time, let's bring it back for discussion on the commission. Uh, let me follow through a little bit on that is a year ago, we talked and I had been to Paradise and one of the issues with say Verizon versus the FirstNet is in Paradise, the networks became so overloaded that first responders had no communications whatsoever with the FirstNet program. But intent is only first responders have access to that. And therefore there is communication available to the first responders during a major event. So it's a little bit different than just a normal carrier and, and what can be on a carrier. Other discussion?
So it's FirstNet exclusive to AT&amp;T.
It is. That was, as I understand it, a national contract issued only to AT&amp;T. Is.
Okay.
Okay. Other discussion? All right. Uh, if no other discussion, then, uh, chair would look for a motion. Could you put the motion back online, Bennett?
I'm the motion giver now.
Okay. You'll be the motion giver.
Okay. Well, I think we've had a pretty thorough discussion and appreciate all the comments the public, uh, provided us. But at any rate, uh, with this, I would make the recommendation that we find the project is categorically exempt from the environmental review pursuant to provisions of section 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines and section 183650 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, class three, new construction of small structures.
We have a first?
A, a second.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Roll call, Sue.
I have a first from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Hersog. So a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Di Mattei?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I would further make a motion that we, uh, grant the appeal filed by the project applicant of the zoning administrator's decision to deny the project and approve the minor use permit, PLN 19002112, or 0212, supported by the findings and subject to the modified conditions contained in the Stanford report.
Second. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Johnson and I'm sorry, who was the second?
Uh, Mr. Uh.
Hersog.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Hersog, second. So a vote for Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Di Mattei?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
The decision of the planning commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. The appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619. With that, uh, that ends today's meeting and the meeting is adjourned.